Senior Adult Ministries at First Baptist Church, welcome. And our pledge of allegiance, I'm not sure if Yasmin is here tonight. So Commissioner Gault, would you like to do the pledge?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Topp, would you like to come on up?
Thank you. Can we pray together? Father, we acknowledge that you have ordained government and leaders. And we lift up these leaders our people have chosen and ask for your direction upon them, Father. Father, you have given them authority. May they use it with compassion. You have given them responsibility. May they exercise it with accountability. And Father, you have placed upon them decisions. May they make those decisions with great wisdom. Father, we thank you for the community you've given us. But we pray, Father, for its welfare. We ask, Father, that it be one, that it be growing, that it be reaching in a special way to those about us who are needing more services and more care. And Father, we pray that tonight, the choices and decisions made would be in keeping with your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a proclamation tonight for Safe Schools Week. And Tony, you're here to, Troy, I'm sorry, you're here to accept it for Dr. Green? All right? This ties in, this ties in quite a bit to our Anti-Bullying Task Force. "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens; and whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings; and whereas the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools; and whereas all leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, should eagerly collaborate with each other to focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote answers to these critical issues; and whereas numerous schools and school districts throughout the country, along with national programs, are among those innovative answers; and whereas the observance of Safe School Week encourages students, parents, educators, and the community to join the team and stop the bullying, violence, and risky behavior in our schools to promote safe and secure learning climates. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2013, a Safe School Week and encourage all fraternal, legal, government, and professional associations, students and educators, and America's school to formally adopt similar resolutions and proclamations so that we may enthusiastically work together to make our schools safe, secure, and peaceful places for learning, teaching, and working, free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand to cause the seal of the city to be affixed this eighth day of October."
We appreciate that.
Thank you. And wonderful words in this proclamation. Would you like to say something?
Just that we, first off, thank you. Appreciate that on behalf of your office, as well as the Board of Commissioners. We do appreciate that. And certainly, to the Board, we do, you know, extend a hand of friendship as well to visit our schools during that week. And also, you know, let our students see your presence and let that message continue on. And again, we thank you for the time and the continued commitment to their schools and to the children of Paducah City Schools. Thanks.
Thank you. And we had, the task force had Art Davis and Michael Seglinsky attend our last meeting. It was very informative, the many things that you all are doing in the schools to combat bullying. It made us feel really good and, you know, we want to be good partners with the schools throughout McCracken County.
The, just commenting on that, having worked at Tillman for as long as I have, I know that we always want to create that environment that's conducive to learning for our students. I think a lot of times, we tolerate what we allow. And the numbers, you know, the statistics out there with cyberbullying and it just tears at the fabric of the child, of the individual. So to have a program in place to deal with that, I think just about every kid in the school system understands that that will not be tolerated and be dealt with on various levels. There's no bully zones, you know, that's kind of a cool thing to promote and kids catch on to that. But when it gets to the administrative level to follow through with what we pledged that we're going to do for the safety of our students, and even the student that's doing it, needs to be a solid message in with the city, partnering with the county and the city schools. It sends a great message.
Our next meeting, we're having the middle school principals to attend that meeting and talk with us. And, you know, we feel like middle school is that real vulnerable age, especially for bullying. Seems like you see more there in freshmen, once they mature a little bit. But I was really impressed with what Art does at Paducah Tillman and the program that Michael has out at the county schools.
Also with me, I have Ms. Nora Cox, she is the Assistant Principal at Paducah Middle School. So she brings a lot to the table. And we'd like to extend this.
Sure. I know that invitation's been sent out and I'm sure we'd love to have you too. Okay. Okay, do we have any additions or deletions, City Manager?
There are none.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, please, for the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 24th, 2013, and October 1st, 2013, City Commission Meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
With motions, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents, insurance certificates, Jason Sams, DBA Sams Brothers Concrete, Bond Electric, Inc., right-of-way, or two, right-of-way bond for Jason Sams, DBA Sams Brothers Concrete. Three, notice of cancellations for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah for 5:30 PM, September 10th, 2013. Four, Commissioner's deeds, A, 434 Ohio Street, B, 1131 Flornoy Street. Five, deed of release for Freedom Capital Investments. Six, agreements, contracts, A, Second Amendment to Tower Option and Lease Agreement between the City of Paducah and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. B, Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Paducah and Tom Dunn for Roof Stabilization for the Roof Stabilization Assistance Program for 2003 Broadway. C, Memorandum of Understanding between Superior Care Homes, Inc., and City of Paducah for the Relocation of Corporate Offices and Rehabilitation Facility. D, AIA Design Build Construction Agreement between the City of Paducah and McCracken County and A&amp;K Construction, Inc., for the TeleTech Call Center Agreement between the City of Paducah and Harper Construction LLC for the Greenway Trail Phase Two. Seven, Change Order Number Three with Bluegrass Uniforms for Uniform Services for the Fire Department. Eight, Change Order Number One with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing Company, Inc., for two triple combination pumper trucks. Nine, Grant Agreement for 2013-2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant, JAG Award. Ten, Williams Williams &amp; Lentz LLP Financial Statements for Years Ended June 30th, 2013 and 2012 for Paducah Waterworks. Eleven, Paducah Waterworks Financial Highlights for August 2013. Twelve, Annual Report for Television Department for Fiscal Year 2012-2013.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky for additional plan review and inspection responsibilities within the City of Paducah. This agreement is for a term of three years, however, it may be canceled as described in KRS 198B dot O six oh.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the purchase and acquisition of the real property located at 5065 Concord Avenue, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, from Betty J. Owens for the improvement of a public project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to purchase the real property located at 5065 Concord Avenue, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, the property, for purposes of the Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project from Betty J. Owens for the purchase price of $500,000, subject to the reservation of a life estate interest reserved by Owens in into a portion of the property to be set out in the deed of conveyance from Owens to City of Paducah.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
The reason I was, I was looking, I think there was another proclamation, but it wasn't on this, so I didn't.
It's being postponed.
Okay, postponed, good. I mean, not good, but.
I think you're presenting it at the conference.
Okay. I was tell both. All right. We'll go on to ordinance's introduction. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah accepting an amendment to the grant award for an extension of time with the Office of the Governor, Department for Local Government, for the Paducah Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project Community Development Block Grant, number 10 dash 109. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts an amendment to the grant agreement with the Office of the Governor's Department of Local Government to extend the project completion date from December 31st, 2013 to December 31st, 2014, for the Paducah Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project Community Development Block Grant, number 10 dash 109.
Second.
Okay. We've been working on this for some time to get those elevators at Jackson House, so.
Mayor, I do have a couple of questions about that. I read that it was 75% done. City Manager, do either of you know why it's taken so long?
Well, I know that.
And what?
What took so long, like the first part of it, they didn't have anybody bid on it when we first.
Right. Right.
When they first bid it out, and that put the project way behind. But I don't really know why this.
Couldn't tell you. As the memo says, there's an expected completion date of December 31st, so we're very, very close. I think the additional amount of time is just to allow for any post-construction paperwork lag, so.
Are we, the city overseeing that project, or is it simply a flow-through?
It's a community development block grant. It's kind of the city's sponsorship, if you will, in terms of our block grant eligibility with the state was used for it, so.
It just flows through the city.
Okay. So it's not anything with us that would be delaying it?
No.
No.
Mm-mm. No, we don't have anything to do with the construction or.
Okay.
Okay, we need to vote on, no, we don't vote on those, those are introductions. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving Change Order Number Two with Mac Construction and Excavating, Inc., for the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1A, piles and mass fill, and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah hereby approves Change Order Number Two with Mac Construction and Excavating, Inc., in the amount of three, 3, 3 million, 314 million?
314,000.
314,428 dollars and 82 cents, therefore increasing the total contract price to $4,805,028 and 82 cents for the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1A piles and mass fill, authorizes the Finance Director to transfer the required additional $50,000 for completion of the project from the Investment Fund to the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Account and reduce the transfer from the Investment Fund to the MAP Fund by $50,000 and authorizes the mayor to execute said change order. Ooh, I almost had a heart attack.
Did me a heart attack?
I had to pick Allen up from.
I need a second.
Need a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Okay, City Manager?
The change order, as Commissioner Gault mentioned, is in the amount of 314,428 dollars in some sense. This change order, the bulk of that is the 265,000 that the Commission appropriated in addition to the original project budget some months ago now. Execution of the change order was, did not occur until essential project completion. Of that 265,000 that was requested for the pilings, that will materialize, we think, at 192,428 dollars. So that's a portion of that 265, or a portion of the use of the total change order of 314,000. In addition to that, of that 314,000, the amount of 42,000 is expensed against that for the retaining to the barges during the period of time when we were doing some investigation as to whether or not we would amend the contract for additional rock, the eventual decision being that we would not do that. But that's a cost of retaining access to the barge that was essentially the expense of some time there. In addition to that, there remained from the original 265,000 approximately $30,000 that was not needed for either the gangway piles or the barge retainage. And that $30,000 and an additional 50,000 appropriation request that's part of this change order tonight is being requested to accomplish what we have referred to for several weeks now as an orderly shutdown. It's a concept that we talked about. That means we simply don't walk away from the project as it exists, but we consider the significance of the investment that the city has made in that project, which is around $3 million, some two and a half million of it being rock and rock work, and how we can protect the stability of that during the interim time between now and when that project would ever be completed. So in fact, 30,000 of that original and 265, and another 50,000 is being requested to accomplish some slope changes underwater that will protect against erosion of the rock and potential damage to the bottom of the river associated with the weighting that exists there now in some vertical sense. A one-to-one slope is essentially vertical, and this movement of rock that we want to accomplish through that $80,000 will affect a three-to-one slope gentlely and put less weight and pressure on the riverbed and create some stability that, quite frankly, our consulting engineers would be very concerned about during the interim period of time. So that's the purpose behind that, to recognize the investment that the city has in place now and to protect it during the period of time that we are taking to determine how and when we proceed with project completion down the road.
Was, questions?
My question is, how come there's not a slope there now? I mean, how?
Because the sloping of that would have come later as they would have completed that area. It would have been accomplished later on in the project. It represents a contouring that would have occurred later on that was not yet done at that stage of project shutdown.
So to leave, because we chose to put the brakes on it.
Because we chose to put the brakes on it.
It's at this one, what was it?
It's at a one-to-one slope.
It's at a one-to-one slope.
Yeah, because it was not anticipated at what time or that we would put the brakes to it. It accorded and the project was left in a certain condition. And we recognized and in our discussions that we needed to accomplish what we called an orderly shutdown. And I think this very much fits the bill there. In other words, let's do it in an orderly fashion. Let's take a look at what should be done or could be done to. And I think when we talk about orderly, I think what that reduced itself to most significantly at the end of the day was ensuring the stability of what we had in place so that we did not leave in place the potential for any kind of slippery, erosion, or collapse, if you will, of the subsurface soil, which we have the concern about here because of the density above it. And that's in the one-to-one slope, and that's what will be mitigated by the gentling of the slope.
When you say orderly shutdown, there was always scheduled to be a shutdown of this project at some point now. And it would be on hold until, it would be, it would be finished at some point in the future.
But that was after final build-out, final placement of the rock. It was going to be delayed before we went further just to allow any settlement to occur after the footprint was totally in place, which it's not now, which we all know.
Is this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, but I think that's what's confusing me as well. In Phase 1A, regardless of whether we went to 320 or whether we went to 330, regardless of how much rock was in there, we were going to have to stop and then add more rock nine months later. We always knew that. So the slope contour, that's what's confusing. Do you understand?
Rick's here, let's let him speak to it.
That's the confusing part.
Can I make a comment? Because I'm not exactly the biggest proponent of this whole deal, but, Rick will explain it, but what we're asking for, and I, and I've wrestled with it all weekend, if, you know, if this is kind of the bump out, and here's this one-to-one slope, because you piled this rock up here, and we kind of like ran out of rock, or ran out of, didn't have enough. If we'd have put all that we were going to put on there, it would have then sloped, if we continued to put all the rock and built it up to the 330 or the 338, it would then sloped out. It would have just naturally been that way, and then we would have stopped for nine months or a year. It's because the way we put the rock, or the way Mac put the rock in, not knowing, I mean, nobody knew that we were not going to, and I can't believe I'm defending all this.
But we didn't know.
But I am. But we didn't know we were going to stop, and we didn't know that 316,000 tons was going to be short.
That's the.
Had it all got in there as proposed, the slope would have been handled, but because we stopped short with the rock, the way it was put in, the slope didn't get created.
But you know how we talked about cutting it off, flipping it over? That's, regardless of how much rock, that was going to happen. That's what's confusing me.
Okay. On the upstream portion of the project, Mac prepared, and I want to call it the circumference of the project, on the upstream portion of the project, Mac prepared that for the three-to-one slope to be manipulated at the end of the project. So 60% of the perimeter is ready for that, and that's not part of this money we're talking about. That's all being done on Mac's nickel, because that's all included in their unit price of $12 per ton for that upstream portion, because they were very close to doing that. They didn't do it at this stage of the game because they were looking to do that all at one time when the entire project was done, but then we had the shortfall of the material. It's the portion that's adjacent to the piles. They had to get the piles in the ground first before they could put the stone around those piles, because you can't drive those piles through stone. It's that portion that's directly upstream of the piles that's on the one-to-one slope. They had to get the piles in and then finish the rock, but we ran out of rock. It's that portion that's on a one-to-one that needs to be shallowed to a three-to-one slope, so it doesn't exert too much pressure on the river bottom that could cause some instability of the soil in the river bottom that could cause it to displace if it were just left that way. We don't have a quote-unquote "plan" moving forward because now we're in this orderly shutdown to see how to move forward with the project. So in the interim period, we are lessening that slope to a three-to-one so that it doesn't disturb the river bottom or overload it beyond its capacity. The geotechnical engineers, when they prepared their designs for this, they did what they call, and I didn't want to do this, but they did what they call a global stability analysis, and it studies soil and see how much weight it can hold vertically without displacing from overburden. We asked if that could be reduced to a two-to-one when we were in negotiations to reduce the number of stones. Remember, we had a first bid and then negotiated the second bid. They said that could not be put at a two-to-one. I said, could we put it at a two-and-a-half-to-one? No, it can't be put at a two-and-a-half-to-one. It needs to be at a three-to-one if we want this to be stable. All things being perfect, if we would have completed this project, it would all be at a three-to-one. But we're at, and I would say, 80% complete or 75% complete on this project. But we can't walk away from it and leave it at a one-and-a-half-to-one because we already know it's overloading the riverbed. So we need to reduce that slope to a three-to-one to stabilize it, to distribute the load better on the river bottom. So that's what we're doing. This is the orderly shutdown for that. Now, as we proceed forward with the project, the slopes will still stay at a three-to-one when we add new rock. I'm assuming. I'm assuming that we're going to stick near to the original plan. So we'll be adding rock to that at a later date at a three-to-one, but it will cause it to move out a little bit, but it'll still be at a three-to-one, giving the footprint what it needs so it doesn't overload the riverbed.
Okay, but that's what my, that's what is confusing me. Phase 1, we decided that it had to be at a three-to-one.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've been knowing how much rock it was going to be, and we've put in that amount of rock, correct?
But we've put in that amount of rock.
Wouldn't that price have included it coming to a three-to-one?
Yes, and now we're getting into means and methods of construction. Okay.
But why are we paying extra to take it to a three-to-one?
Okay. As discussed earlier, we talked about the upstream portion where the contractor prepared it on a three-to-one, then he created a bench, a flat area, and then a steep area. This is his technique of preparing it where his machines can manipulate it to a three-to-one at a later date. Okay? Now, he did that with dump trucks and bulldozers. The portion that is next to the piles, he never had the opportunity to create his bench to do this, a step-down version or terracing, if you will, before he clipped it off to create the three-to-one because he ran out of stone. Okay, so now he's got pretty much about a 40-to-50-foot fill at a one-and-a-half-to-one going straight down, or going down at a one-to-one, which is overloading the riverbed. That's not the way he would have built the entire project. He stopped, he's in an interim portion on this project for that portion that's next to the piles. It's very difficult to explain without, I guess, I guess illustrations or figures to show what I'm talking about.
Would this be to protect the landmass, our future park area?
No, it's not to protect the landmass. It's to maintain the integrity of the river bottom so that, well, okay, let me-
There is potential erosion down there.
Let me, let me, let me, let me put it in a different way. It's standing there now, and if it shifts, if it causes the river bottom to fail because we've overloaded it in its current state, then the cost of correcting that at a later date would be much higher. Now, somebody might ask, well, how much? I can't tell you that right now because I don't know what the failure might be. But I can tell you this, it would be much, much greater than what we're looking at right now.
And what is the actual total new money you're asking for?
50,000.
Fifty. Up to, an extra expenditure, up to 50,000. Because earlier you were saying some different numbers, Jeff, so it's only, or is an additional up to?
It's an additional 50,000 above the 265. Total amount up to 80,000 for this particular part of the change order, but up to 50,000 additional money from what's in the project right now.
The 30,000 is coming-
Right, I understand that.
-from other money.
But I don't want it to be confused that it's an additional 80.
No, it's an additional 50 to the project.
Up to. And I get what you're saying, Rick. It's going to keep it from blowing out and eroding away. I'm just having, do you understand what I'm saying? I don't understand why it wasn't included in the difference, because we were always going to walk away from it and let it settle.
That, we're going to stop it at this point.
I get it.
We ran out of rock.
That's a way to explain it.
That's the problem.
I, I mean, I, I-
Try this. We're going to build a birthday cake, and we use really thin icing. And we only have so much icing, so we start pouring the icing, we're going to pour this icing, and that's how thin it is. And so the icing kind of runs over the side of the birthday cake and comes down very steeply. And if we had just enough icing in our tube to, we just covered it, and that's kind of where we are now. And you can see if this seems right to you. And it's really on the piling side. But if we really had a lot of icing that we could pour in this cake and just kept pouring it on, it would start to run off, it would then hit the, and then would start to fill up the side of that cake. And it would finally get to the point where it was a nice slope on the side of the cake, and it'd be really, really thick icing.
Yeah, but here's the problem with that analogy.
Did you know how much icing you needed before you baked the cake?
Yeah, I would have contracted with you as the baker, and regardless, I would have expected you to produce the cake. All that's your problem.
We only had 16,000 tons of icing.
I get what you're saying.
So we get that extra icing, and then it will start to flow, and that's maybe-
I think in response to your question, Commissioner, it's pretty simple that there's-
We just have to do it.
Few tens of thousands, a ton of rock that were not put on there before the shutdown that had previously been planned. Had that been done, these contours would have been worked into that.
They would, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
But we're doing it by time and material, and that was the other thing I had a question about. So we're sure that it's not going to go above and beyond the 50,000.
Yes.
And, okay, all right.
Using rock that's already on site.
It's no new material.
Double handling is part of it.
We're reshaping.
Reshaping. Can you tell we rehearsed that?
Yeah.
So basically, the number, the tonnage that was going to be necessary to complete this, it was set. We knew how much rock we needed, but because we hit the pause button, that's where we are right now.
Mm-hmm.
But we were always going to stop at some point. We just stopped sooner than we-
But the key being that the point we were going to stop at was 50,000, 60,000 ton, whatever more, that would have affected this buildup and this slopeage before we were going to stop.
But still, to me, it seems like we're protecting our investment.
Oh, very much so.
Made so far, which is the landmass.
Exactly.
That's what we're actually protecting from falling into the river or from the riverbed collapsing, or whatever it is you're saying. We're really protecting our investment that we have already made.
Correct.
So a year later, we don't have to come back and do it again?
Absolutely.
Correct.
That's, this is an expenditure to ensure that everything would be an orderly way ready to go when we move forward again.
With what you decide to move forward with, exactly.
So we should not have to talk about this for several months.
Well, I would not, I would not say, I would not say several months because-
I'd spend more money for several months.
PRDA, PRDA will need to be looking at some engineering redesign work because our money is on the clock. Your FHWA money and your boating infrastructure grant money is on the clock, so it is something that will be being worked.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, on a slightly less controversial subject, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement for a position of police chief. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Brandon Barnhill for employment as police chief of the City of Paducah.
Second. Okay, city manager.
Well, this is a fairly standard employment agreement such as we have with our directors, and it outlines many of the conditions that are quite frankly documented elsewhere. I think what stands out in terms of being unique to this agreement or a special condition of this agreement is a severance clause that's in addition to what is provided for in the Kentucky Bill of Rights that covers police officers. So there is a six-month severance allowance here should the chief of police be removed at such time that he's willing to stay on the job. So that's the most significant component of this in terms of different or over and above what else we have in policy or practice.
And that severance package is if we just decide we want to get rid of him?
Without cause.
Right, without cause. All right. And we don't want to get rid of him.
No.
All right, city managers report.
I don't have anything other than to request an executive session for economic development.
All right. Commissioners' comments?
I have a couple. And these are directly from some folks that's having some issues in their, in their neighborhood. The 21st Madison Monroe in that area, there's, citizens have complained about things being stolen, lawnmowers, weed eaters, things like that. Particular time around 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the morning, early AM is when the, when these things happen. Talked to some of them today, and it's happened more than a couple of houses. So that being my neighborhood as well, wanted to bring that to the attention of our PD. And I have an animal warden question. Are the only animals that the animal warden-
Why are you looking at me?
No, I'm just looking over in that direction. Whoa. Are the only animals that the animal warden service, are they dogs? That's it?
No, no, any animal, horses, goats, foxes. And I have alerted, if it's about the fox, I have alerted Mark Thompson because Tracy had sent me a-
Okay, I know, I know that's what everybody thinks. But technically, what is it? I mean, Jeff, I mean, you were-
There's certainly a focus on cats and dogs. We have encountered some inconsistencies in willingness in other areas, so I would support the notion that you get beyond cats and dogs, it gets a little less consistent.
Well, maybe we should change that title, because there are other animals other than cats and dogs that causes problems in neighborhoods, and folks want to call the animal warden and then tell them, well, you're going to have to fight that raccoon yourself because that's not what we do, so.
Let me expand on that a little bit, Commissioner. Like a cat.
Yes.
A cat is a feral animal according to the state of Kentucky. The animal warden cannot come and take your cat. You have to put out a humane trap, trap the cat, and then they will come and pick the cat up. But because it's considered a wild animal, and I think that's where they run into the problem with foxes and raccoons, if Mark or the Parks Department or whoever puts a live trap out there, safe trap, traps the fox, then they will come and pick it up. But I think it's part of the state, the way the state law reads about animals being wild animals versus domesticated animals.
So if you're being tormented by a raccoon, you got to catch him.
Got to trap it.
And then have the animal warden come by and pick it up.
And there are people that make a living doing that for folks. I mean, you can call them, they'll come and get raccoons out of your chimney, any kind of rodent problem that you're having.
That pretty much answers that question.
See, he was looking at you because he knew you know the answer.
Yeah, that-
A neighbor had a raccoon, got in her bedroom, and we called somebody, she called me, and we called somebody a couple of years ago.
Call Commissioner Rhodes.
No, no, I would, I was just a private citizen, but we had to call somebody from the, I think we called from the state, and they directed us.
Okay.
So, no, they don't, but yes, they do. It just depends on if they're in a cage or not.
Also, last thing, over, what's the street that runs right beside Red's Donut? As you come, there's Jackson and, what's the street that runs right?
Twenty-something.
Twenty-way?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth Street. Jones Street runs right off of 28th Street, and there's a, there's a bus stop down about, about a block from, from the corner. Kids congregate there, obviously waiting on the bus. There's been several complaints to me that the traffic coming through there during those AM times when kids are out on the bus stop is extremely too fast. They wanted to know if there was any way that we could have any type of signage, letting folks know that bus stop area. I don't know exactly how to, how to put that together, but it's, it's an issue. So I told those good folks I'd bring that up to our engineering director.
Troy, you want to join me up here? Actually, the timing for that, Commissioner, is pretty good because Troy Brock, your title is, and moving, moving the young folks, and then also our PD represented here, I think between the three of us, we can work something out for that. If there's a traffic enforcement issue of cars traveling too fast, of course, that'd be a PD issue. And then, of course, the buses, the way they position themselves is to protect the kids or if we need to modify the stop. So there's, there's a myriad of ways we can correct that.
Appreciate you. All right.
Something that someone has mentioned to me, which we don't have any control over, I think it would be Paducah Area Transit, is a couple of bus stops that formerly had covered areas for people to catch the bus have been taken down.
Yeah, what happened to those?
That's probably something we should mention.
Shelters?
To Paducah Transit. Any of y'all want to email Mr. Boinkin on that issue also.
That's all I have.
We have public comment tonight. Vanita? Vanita? Jeanette?
Do I have the microphone?
Yeah, you need to come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
It won't bind.
Mm-hmm.
I think for a different reason, I thought I heard on the radio that there was going to be a meeting regarding Mike Conley.
Oh, that's at, that's at the county.
Oh, so I guess I was needed here.
I guess so.
Oh, that's funny.
I don't, they may still be in the process of having that meeting.
Okay, because I was wondering, what were the people?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I made some notes, and the comment about every student knowing about the bullying is incorrect. I know you have a good heart for that, but every student does not know what you mean. And I say that to say that from personal experience, a generation and a half from, well, two generations from the little children now, God was taken out of the equation. Everyone is afraid to teach. I don't know how it's done here because I'm not a native Kentucky person. But in other areas where it's quite severe, where you have taxpayers who are not able to pay enough money because the best citizens who have the money have moved away, that may be happening here, or either already happened here, where people with money, they've gone to the outlying areas. And so you have a group of students who are still stuck in the middle. I don't know how that is here, but I know from experience that every student is not getting what you're saying because you'll tell them something in a general meeting, you don't know if the principals are on it. Years ago, the school I went to, the principal was on it, and that particular principal was so good, well, it was like a private school when I think back on it, and I only thought about that recently. And Mr. Conley has a school named for him because when he walked the halls, he knew who we were. We had teachers, we had a gym teacher, we had a fantastic music teacher, and if I would name a young lady who was present in her choir, you would know that young lady, some of you, but I won't make that mention. But Mr. Conley walked the halls, but he had strong teachers. He had teachers who weren't afraid, and then the atmosphere was different then, as it is now. Now you have to deal with knives, guns, possible portals to separate the knives and guns. I don't know, I'm not sure how it works here, but I know in the larger cities, it's like that, like, it's like that in, I know, been for years, probably in New York and Chicago. Or they still don't do it because they are afraid to enter into certain zones. So I just want to let you know that every student didn't get it, every student won't get it, because in the home, you don't know if anything has been taught about it, because you have people who are attending the schools, you have children who are attending those schools who came from homes where the mother and father are not going to church, they're not familiar with God, they're not familiar with Jesus, they don't have time for that, and they're doing- they don't have time for that, and they're doing other things. So, I don't mean to come so strong because I didn't come to preach, I just took notes.
Yeah, just to, understanding that the goal of, and I can speak from the staff at Tillman and as well as pretty much the district, is that our young people understand what bullying looks like. We do that in various different ways. I think any individual understands when he or she is being bullied. You're correct, there is a disconnect from the home to the school in many instances, not in all. So, it's, I feel like as an employee of the Paducah City School System, whenever I see or if I hear of something like that, a bullying situation going on, I have a responsibility. Now, moving past that, we try our best to get that message out. We are very interactive with our student body on special, special events. But you're right, once two-thirty or two-twenty hits and those children leave school, for many of those children, that, that school is the safe zone. Now, once they get, leave school and go home, I'm not sure exactly what happens. But when they're at school, the staff in, at our school is doing everything they can to, when they hear, when they see a bullying situation going on, to act on it because we know the results if you don't.
Okay, that's one person. You're one person, that's one school. Perhaps that school is in a nice area. I'm speaking of an area where you really need some help for the people who are hurting. I don't know who takes care of the people who are hurting. I have a friend who went to an area today. She dropped me off because we thought I was going to go to one place. I went across the street to the other place, which was the Salvation Army Society, something. Okay, I go over there. So, when she picks me up, she tells me about this little boy who had some kind of something done to his hair, and she said he was acting like he was mad at the door of the Cardinal Lanes. And she was frightened. I had to tell her, probably he was artistic. And, you know, we're wondering why he wasn't in school. I guessed, and it could've been incorrectly, that maybe he came from parents where they were doing something, but then maybe he came from what they call a good home.
Was that today?
Yes. But I made that example.
We're on fall break.
And we're on fall break this week, so that's why he wasn't in school.
Okay, now, I said all that to say that you're one person, speaking of one school, and if you want to protect your schools, you're going to have to do a bit more to keep from producing that type of behavior you don't want.
Well, we're trying, I mean, we got, we got task force, we got a lot of different individuals, parents wanting to partner with us to help this situation, so-
Excuse me, I'm also going to propose a tax rate of some pennies. The Transportation Department did that in the city that I'm from. They keep adding on pennies to the Transportation Department so the Transportation Department can work for the poor. Now, you have, you have the working people who will now catch the rail, and maybe one or two will catch the bus. But the way they work it is that you have the rail bringing people in from the suburbs like they do on the East Coast. Then you let them ride the train, maybe or may not, they won't pay, I don't know, because they don't have enough police to guard the, you know, the trains. But it's bringing the people back in where you need the money. So, what they do ever so often is get pennies. So, I'm just giving you that idea. Those pennies go a long way. However, this is a small community, but so you maybe have to take, you know, take nickels, but not to take up your time. I heard something about the rock, something in the river, and the young man said something about a million ways on, you know, fixing the situation, I think he said. No, no, I take it back. It was about the traffic, the traffic department. And I know someone who had experience with the raccoon. This lady thought it was a cat. So, that was an episode with the raccoon in the older lady's house. And that was the situation. So, it, it was done by Commissioner, by the city managers. What he said was correct, that's what she had to do, but she had to get people to help her. Had she not had a group of people who were, who had known her from the past because of her husband, she would've been cooked, you know? But people helped her.
Jeanette? We usually allow five minutes for public comment.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing that's very important. He said, he said, "There are a million ways you can correct that," which was about the traffic and the children and the bus. And right now, I'm choosing to ride the bus, and there are no bus signs. And there are, there aren't-
Identifying the bus stops.
Yes.
Well, and let me tell you that you can stand anywhere on the street and catch a bus. I do know that Paducah Area Transit will stop anywhere if they'll see you there.
I was told by the Transit Department that they, they had certain stops, and that wasn't happening.
Well, that's, I've been told the other that-
It's not true. It's whatever they told you.
Well, they got, they got, I mean-
They have fixed stops, but they'll-
Yeah, but they'll give you up.
But if you're, if you're on the-
But they have fixed stops without a sign, and I'm not speaking of somewhere to sit, I, I stand, but there are fixed stops with no sign.
Well, of course, see, Paducah Area Transit is its own entity with federal grant money, and it's not part of the city. We do contribute as, as a city because of some services that we get from Paducah Area Transit, but we'll bring that all up with Mr. Boinkin.
Okay, because I was trying to catch a bus, and I walked and walked different ways, and there was no sign.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we'll go into our executive session, and we will not be making any decisions when we come back. So, we're adjourned? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want?
Any motion?
Oh, yes, we do, don't we?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 618101G.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.